Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Pennfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting is going to be held virtually due to the governor's executive order which suspended certain provisions of the open meetings law. Certainly, we'll still have the public be able to comment on the applications. We will have the applicants here, virtually, they'll be able to present. Board members will have questions, and then, as I said, we will open it up to the public for comments. The public can comment by calling 340-8771 or online through the town website at pennfield.org. Every meeting, even COVID and pre-COVID and post-COVID, I like to say on behalf of the board that we think the town does a really good job of making sure people in the town are fully informed of their right to come in and talk about applications. And the town notifies folks by sending postcards to you if you live within a certain distance of the application property, by having the applicant put the sign that looks like a for-sale sign in front of it, also by posting the agenda on the website. And here at the town hall, we think it works well, and we certainly welcome everybody's comments. Makes our job easier most of the time. And tonight's meeting is going to take place first with the public hearings. As I said, we'll have the applicant give us name and address, and then explain to the board why the relief request should be granted. Board will have questions, and then we'll open it up to folks. After the public hearing, for each application, we will launch right into deliberation on that application. Once we're done with that, we'll move to the next application. So unless somebody needs it, we're probably not going to take a recess tonight. We have kind of a long agenda, but I think everybody's going to be okay. But if you need a recess, just let me know. I think I covered everything. So having said that, I'd ask that you rise and join me in pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Great. May we have the first, oh, excuse me, the first agenda item? That's right, we're still in work session, aren't we? I'm rushing things a little bit.
Probably minutes, right? You want to do minutes from last month?
Yeah. So if we could have a motion to approve the minutes from last month's meeting?
So I'm moved.
Second.
Any further comment? Good job again, Christine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, let's go to the table application. I don't know if anybody here is here on behalf, thanks, on behalf of the applicant or not. But we were going to get some further information about the intention of the applicant, and I think we did receive an email.
Yes.
Is the applicant, I think I see your name.
Good evening, this is for Southeast Bible Baptist Church.
Can you just go through real quick, in essence, what your email said?
So in our last meeting, there were some questions on the plan for use of a digital sign to be located near our driveway. Our plan to use that sign is to display factual information about services, service times, cancellations. We have about seven messages that we would be putting through on a fairly standard basis. We're not looking to change those messages with any fly-ins or animations. We would simply swap between one message and the next at an interval of about one minute, certainly not less than 30 seconds. In addition to that, we'd had some follow-up on a few items that I had noted in the last meeting related to the building sign out front. We've corrected some damage to the main building sign, and we'll be adding that to our facilities checklist going forward.
Thank you for that supplemental submission. We appreciate that. Any board members have any questions on the further information submitted?
I think one of the points you guys were going to look at is how often the sign would be, you know, changing text. You know, I think we were looking for more of a, you know, prolong to try to see if we can work around the idea of not having a flashing sign or the appearance of a flashing sign, and kind of what was your best case scenario for that?
Yeah, so it takes about 15 seconds to drive by the viewing area of where the sign would be. So our plan was to change, you know, not more than 30 seconds, so two passes by the sign to limit the number of changes that any particular driver would be exposed to. In addition to that, we're looking to do, to display a text on a dark background, so it'll be a fairly simple presentation, and we're looking to just switch that text. So we'll go from one message to another without any effects, not scrolling in from the side or fly-in type effects, so that there's less movement associated with the change of the sign.
Thank you.
Certainly.
I still have a question about the size of the display board, because when I look at these messages, it seems like they're small enough or short enough that the display area could be reduced in size.
So we had...
Go ahead. Go ahead.
So we, one of the things that we're hoping to accomplish with this is to make it easily readable. The display size that we have selected, I understand, is a fairly standard size, and Dan, you can maybe help me out with this in terms of the technology we've selected here. From my understanding, it's a fairly standard size, and we're looking to make the sign easily readable.
Yeah, for reference, this, the proportion of the digital area compared to the static portion is nearly identical to the setup on the Webster Fire Hall located on Route 250. It's fairly similar in the sign that we've selected, the digital part of it, the company we're buying it from does not carry anything thinner than that. So we would almost have to re-engineer the sign to change at this point. I'm sure anything can be made, but it is certainly within the bounds of what's currently out there in Webster. If you check the Webster Fire Hall on 250, it's very similar ratio.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I'm just, you know, thinking about a fire department has a very different use than a church in terms of the kind of messaging that's displayed. It could very well be safety messages and things like that. Webster may have a different code, I'm not quite sure, but...
That's true. It's on the same road. You know, they actually have lots of flashing and colors and movement. Not that I'm saying that, you know, requires any action here, I'm just pointing it out as reference, is that it is nearby, and people expect, are used to seeing signs of that nature.
Yeah. So the size that we have listed there is about two foot vertically by six foot horizontally. I believe that's similar to the size used at the Pennfield Fire Hall near the four corners there. And again, I recognize your point around public safety versus business hours.
Right. I mean, I think, once again, could public safety versus event or, you know, messaging. So, okay, thank you.
But again, we would like the messages to be easy to read. We don't want it to be something that would be distracting to drivers as they try and read smaller print going by.
Thanks for your response.
Certainly.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
I have nothing.
All right. I don't know that we ever, really wasn't a public hearing tonight, it was a tabled matter. I don't see any comments from the public, but in any event, I don't know that we didn't do seeker on this before, did we?
No.
All right, I'll make a motion under seeker to declare this an enlisted action and further to issue a negative declaration under seeker.
A second.
Okay. So I made a motion to declare it an enlisted action and issue a negative declaration. Andres seconded it. Okay. I think Mike was lead on this. So I'll just start off by saying, you know, I realize that we have other signs like this in the town, but to me, that doesn't carry the day here. There certainly is a genuine interest on the part of the applicant for this with legitimate reasons, but I think this is a statute, a change in the way that signs may exist in this town that really needs to come from a change in the code, and the code has to permit them. And I think, my feelings are that the way that it's been described, and I appreciate the more information coming in, that it is akin to a flashing or repeating sign, those that are not allowed by code. But I'm certainly willing to talk more about it here.
So I haven't really...
The board's talking now at this moment.
I apologize.
It's okay.
I think it's probably noteworthy, too, that the two fire districts, well, first of all, I think one of them is Webster, one of them is not even at Pennfield.
Yeah.
And then the Pennfield one, it didn't come before this board, I don't believe.
It doesn't, it came before the town board.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm just concerned about the precedent it sets as well. I'm not sure that's the right area we want to start putting signs in with electronic displays as well.
And like, I mean, to me, I look at the sign code, the sign code is, you know, we have applicants that come here and say, this is a sign for my business, this is what it's going to look like, this is what it's going to appear as, and that's kind of the way it goes. But all of a sudden, you start altering that by saying this is a digital sign that's going to change to put up whatever messages can be up there, and sometimes that's a little bit, it defeats the purpose of coming before the board for a signage package in a sense, because now it's just, it could be anything. And I think that's part of the reason we have a sign code that says not digital, flashing, things like that, because it kind of prevents some of those things from changing, or also a distraction when driving.
Yeah, and that's sort of what I was saying about if a change is going to come in, frankly, I think it is, as the signs get more sophisticated and more aesthetically pleasing, I think eventually there's going to be a change in the code, not just in this town, but pretty much anywhere. But we're not there yet, and I think the more of these that come before us that we would grant, we, in essence, would be changing the statute, and that's really not...
I would agree with that.
...our purview to do that. So anybody else want to comment? You know, because we started talking here and deliberating on it, but I'll give you a chance to say something. I didn't mean to cut you off impolitely before, but go ahead.
That's totally okay. I apologize for not understanding the rules there. So, I mean, I guess my, you know, my counter to the arguments there, you know, I'm not really familiar with how fast a town code can change or what that process looks like, but I imagine it would probably move at a very slow pace. It sounds like the, you know, the objection coming from you guys is not even necessarily that, that you would deny that, but rather to wait for, you know, something that would move at a glacial pace. You know, so I guess my, you know, we just kind of ask you guys for help on that. You know, I mean, we could wait however many years it takes to get something like that changed, but if you perceive this to be where things are headed anyway, you know, we'd appreciate that additional consideration. You know, as far as the safety component, we did present a study last time, last month, showing that there's really no safety concern. I mean, even the signs on lot 04, that they have, those highway signs change fairly rapidly, and those are obviously considered safe where they wouldn't be out there on high-speed roads. And, you know, we've been pretty upfront with the board, we understand that there's changeable elements to this sign, but we're not trying to, you know, get anything past you guys. You know, we've let you know what types of messaging we would put out there, including some of the messaging that's relevant to the town, as the trip tax is a voting site. It would be really nice to be able to have that signage there available for that. We do lots of community outreach stuff as well, with the food pantry and the clothing drop-off and so on. So we do have some, you know, it's not just for us, you know, we are trying to improve things for people in Pennfield as well. So we're not intending to, you know, put anything silly up there and, you know, hey, if the sign gets approved, maybe it helps our reelection campaign. No, I'm just kidding, who wouldn't do that? But I'm just letting you guys know that we're, you know, we're just humbly asking you guys for a chance to put this up. You know, we've had a lot of people drive by the church for years and years and years and say, hey, we didn't even know that that was there. And with all the new businesses coming in on that road, you know, you got the Pennfield Square Apartments there, you got the YMC, it's getting harder to notice businesses on that road. And so we'd like to put out our little, our shingle, as it were, and let people know that we exist essentially. So that's the purpose of what we're trying to do.
Yeah, and we appreciate that. Everything you said in terms of your intent and your motive goes without saying. I mean, there's nothing untoward here as far as any of us are concerned. It's, I think we've all sort of stated where we, how we feel about this, and it's really a statutory interpretation from where I'm sitting.
Yeah, it feels more like legislation than anything else.
In terms of the town code, when I had read through, I had found references to internally illuminated signs. But I may have missed the area where it speaks to digital or flashing signs. Was council able to provide a link to that section of code? Now, that was something that you were going to be looking at between the last meeting and this one, and I just wondered if you'd had follow-up on that.
We have, I didn't, it's been verbal indication.
Yeah, I mean, I can forward you a copy of the applicable section of the code.
Okay, that would be helpful, thank you.
If I could just make one last comment, you know, I guess the, for myself, trying to understand the purposes of the variances, if every variance is in its own way an exception to what's out there in the code, couldn't you also make the same argument that any variance that's approved is, in essence, doing the same thing? Where do you draw the line on a variance that's considered legislating from a CBA meeting versus a variance that's just allowing an exception to the code? Just, just to have a very honest...
Fair question. For me personally, one thing that I would note about this is, this is a request to actually place an object into the, directly into the community with a distinct purpose so that it affects everybody, arguably, or potentially, that drives by it. Other types of variances, we often get requests for variances for sheds. That's probably our most common one, maybe.
Yeah, sheds.
That they're supposed to be X feet from the line, but people want to put them closer to the line. And we entertain those all the time, and most of the time, frankly, we grant them. That doesn't mean to the same degree we're changing the statute, because it's more of a private matter, that the effect of that is not nearly felt like it would be for this. So that's my answer to that, in any event. But I understand where you're coming from.
Yep. The other question that I would have relates to the other church that does currently have a digital sign in Pennfield. I'm not sure if that sign was erected prior to a code change previously, but how would that precedence impact our application?
Yeah, that's a fair question, and I probably voted for that one, in favor of it. It was a while ago, it was, if we're talking about the same one, and I think we are, it did come before this board. So, you know, on a personal note, there are, there's some distinguishing factors in that case in terms of the area, but you're right, that is one that's been in existence for a while in this town, and it's one. This would be another one, and, you know, you get to the point where you're seeing more of these, not just in Pennfield, but around the whole community, and that's why I personally feel we're at the point now that if there's going to be changes, they should come in the form of a change to the code. But I understand where you're coming from.
Do we know for that other existing sign what that vertical height is? Because we've talked proportion of the static part of the sign to the digital part of the sign, and I understand the other, the other sign is different proportionally, but I'm not sure that the digital portion of that sign is smaller than two foot vertical.
I honestly don't know. I can't help you there, and Andy's shaking his head, too, he doesn't know. Okay.
How long does it take to change the town code?
It's, I would not describe it as a glacial pace. It's really something that, depending on what it is, it could take some time, but it could also be done, I don't want to speak for Pete or for Richard Horowitz, the town attorney, but it's not glacial. But it's not going to also be rushed, because the town board is going to want to give thorough consideration to everything. Pete, I don't know if you want to chime in on there or not, I don't want to put you on the spot, but you don't have to, but...
Chime in about the change in the code?
No, you know, just generally speaking, how long does it take? I don't know if you have experience in that regard.
You know, it depends on, I don't know if there's a proposal to change it, and then it could take the board passing it, and then it would take, I think, 30 days before it becomes effective typically. I think that's kind of how they work, but...
Right. Some changes require referendums, so...
Would you support that change in the code?
I don't know at the moment, I'd have to give that some thought. As I said, you've heard me say that I think the future's coming with this, and so...
I think as a board, what we would probably support is more clarity in terms of what the town expects from a digital signage, because that's something that really, the code doesn't really address. You know, it's kind of putting, you know, flashing, you know, digital, which is what this is, but it's not, it's not looking at it probably in the same light as what it was maybe 10, 15 years ago in terms of what it could be now. So I think there's, you know, we really just need clarity in terms of what the town wants to do, how they want to go forward with that, so just a little more clear.
That's a good point.
I did find the measurements for that other sign, if you're interested.
Thank you.
You can email him, if you want.
Okay.
All right, well, my motion is going to be a motion to deny for the reasons that I've stated already tonight.
I'll second it.
All right, any further comments? All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, well, sorry for that result. It certainly wasn't due to a lack of effort or a lack of quality, but more focused on the nature of the code language that we have. So, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, boy, something clicked. All right, so let's go to the next application, then, which is actually the first one for tonight.
Scott Bannister, 10 Fernstone Lane, Pennfield, New York, 14526, requests an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an above-ground swimming pool with less setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F13 of the code at 10 Fernstone Lane. The property is currently or formerly owned by Scott Bannister and Rachel Hokadell and is zoned R-1-20, SBL number 124.01-2-10.3. This is application number 21Z-0005.
We have the applicant here, if you can give us your name and address, and then proceed with your application, please.
Good evening, my name is Scott Bannister, I live at 10 Fernstone Lane, and the application that I'm proposing is for, like you said, an above-ground swimming pool. And primarily, the reason why we're here is as a want to put it behind the house, so it's less of a visual disturbance to any of the neighbors. I have letters from all the neighbors on the street who are all in favor, they all don't have any issues with it, and being behind the house would make it seven feet from the lot line instead of the required 10. And behind, the property behind it is heavily wooded, so there isn't any visual line of sight from the back. So, and putting it off the end of an existing deck places it at that position. So the issue would be to put it closer to the house, and still behind the house would be removing the deck, which would be, you know, prohibitively.
Okay, before the, thank you, and before the board has questions, I'd just remind members of the public they can call with comments, 340-8771, or submit online comments, pennfield.org. We did receive a number of the comments from your neighbors, I think actually you forwarded them to us, which was great.
Yeah.
Okay. What do we got here? Matt?
Yeah, I do think it's good that you got all those letters from your neighbors. You know, I actually don't have that many questions, I think you laid it out well in your application. Did you talk to any of your neighbors about whether they would rather have it on the side of the house and in the back of the house?
I did. The only neighbor that has a view of it or would would be the neighbor at the next house down the street, which would be number 14 Fernstone, and they actually were involved in the planting of the trees in the photo that I sent, which they didn't even request. They said, sure, if you want to, but it doesn't bother us, and yeah, it would be nice behind the house. So we have common children that play in the side yard, so it would allow them to still do that over there.
So they would prefer it in the back instead of the side?
Yeah.
Okay. And a smaller pool wouldn't suit your family's needs?
Yeah, that's what we're hoping, yeah. There are smaller pools. It wouldn't be any visually less for the neighbors, but the next size down would fit there. But yeah, with the size of, with my family, the usability area of a smaller pool is significantly smaller, and visual aspect isn't any less.
And then placing it other places in the back, you'd have to relocate the deck or make it smaller, and that would be cost prohibitive, right?
Yeah, and to take the deck off, there's a supportive beam that's about 18 inches from the exterior, the outside edge of the beam, so to bring the pool closer and take off some of the deck, you'd have to remove the entire deck.
Any other houses in the neighborhood have pools in the back?
There are two others, they are both in-ground, one directly next door at number six, and the one at the end, which is, I think, number 18. I don't think that they required variances for where they put them behind their houses, they didn't have a deck to go beyond, so they're a little bit closer to the houses either.
I have nothing further.
All right, I don't think we have anybody on the phone, and I don't see anything electronically. Any questions from the board? All right, let's proceed with seeker.
Could I make a motion to declare this a type 2 action requiring no further review?
I'll second.
All right. Matt's made the seeker motion, and Andres seconded it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Merits?
I'd make a motion to approve the variance. It's a, I mean, the difference between seven and 10 feet, it's, I guess, not minor, but it's also not overly great, and... great. And, and clearly, the neighbors have no issue with it. I think I probably, if I was the neighbor, would have more of a problem with it being on the side of the house and in the back of the house. So that, I think that this would be in line with the way that the neighborhood currently is. Clearly, there's no environmental impact. They said that there's going to be no trees. I think they're actually planting trees. It's self-created, but I, I don't think that, that outweighs the rest of the factors. So I would vote, or I would move to approve it.
Okay. We have a motion to approve. I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. Good luck.
Great. Thank you very much, everyone.
Next application.
Kevin Schumacher, American Promotional Events, 4003 Helton Drive, Florence, Alabama, 35630. Request a recommendation of approval for the issuance of an itinerant vendor license under Section 162-6-E1B of the code and Section 162-E2 of the code to allow the sales of sparkling devices at 1990 Brant Point Drive. The property is owned by DeMarco Brant Point LLC and is owned general business, SBL number 093.02-1-25.11. This is application number 21Z-0006.
Okay. If we can have the applicant give us name and address for, and then explain the request for relief, please.
Hi. My name is Amanda Gump. I'm actually representing Kevin Schumacher and American Promotional Events. The property location, then, would be the 1990 Brant Point Drive, Webster, New York, 14580. And the, what we're requesting is to be able to set up a fireworks tent for the summer selling season, which runs June 20th through July 5th. We would be requesting to erect the tent approximately three days prior to the selling season and have it down within two days after that.
Okay. Before we ask questions, again, members of the public, feel free to call in 340-8771, or submit comments, penfield.org. Go ahead, Marie. I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. Thanks for your presentation. I just have a few questions. In the past, and I know Mr. Schumacher has come here and had the same application for the past two years. I just want to be sure that everything, you'll be conforming to all safety regulations required by New York State. Can you, can you talk about the security of the, the tent when it's closed or at night?
So there, all of the devices, all the sparkling devices that are being sold during the day are secured in a locked cargo container in the evening. So those will all be placed into that. It will be all placarded with the 1.4 hazardous material explosives on the outside of the container, and those will be double-locked. So they are nice and secure.
Okay. Any music being played?
There will not be music.
And any trash cans placed there? Because I would assume that there might be some trash from people bringing something from a restaurant or something like that, walking through.
So typically, the operator will have a trash can, but it's put behind the sales area. So the checkout stand, it'll be back there. So if something was to be thrown away by the public, they would have to hand it over and have it thrown into the can. There won't be anything visible to the public.
Okay. And you're going to be complying with all social distancing restrictions at the time?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And we also do provide our operators with, we call it a COVID kit. So there's masks in there. There's also hand sanitizer, and the sanitizer can be made available to the public if they wish to use it at that time as well.
Okay. Andy, were there any concerns about traffic or any other concerns last year or the past two years?
No. It's, I mean, it's in the Walmart parking lot. It's, it's a really large parking lot, and there's, there's really ample room. We haven't, I'm not aware of any complaints we received.
Or any traffic concerns, then? Okay. And then the other thing is, we have typically agreed upon a signage package, basically. And given what we had approved a couple of years ago, we would probably be looking for, you know, the similar thing. Not every signage in that kit, not every piece of signage could be used.
Understood.
So I think last time, we limited it to a signed TNT fireworks on each side of the tent, because obviously, that was a concern, being in the middle of a parking lot in a very big plaza. We talked about being able to use the bunting, because that did hide the inventory down below. But really, no additional signage. We did say that it was okay to have some directionals at the entrances of Baytown Plaza. Okay? So it would be really what we had agreed to in previous years, and nothing more.
Okay.
Okay.
Understood. Thank you.
Anything else from?
Any other questions? The only thing that I would ask, my fellow board members pointed it out that, because you're pinch hitting tonight, if you could make sure that the town receives something that confirms that you had authorization to make the presentation tonight. That's all.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Great. Okay. So I would go ahead and make a motion that this, I guess this is a type-two action pursuant to seeker, requiring no further review.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Marie, and a second by Matt. Any further discussion on seeker? All those in favor?
Aye.
And I will go ahead and make a motion to approve an itinerant license, for, an itinerant vendor license for American Promotional Events. Because this is something that we've seen in the past years, I'm fine with going forward. I don't see any issue with traffic, and there have been no concerns, no detrimental effect to adjacent property. If you're going to have a trash can there, that should take care of any litter concerns. There should not be any noise created, because there's no music playing or anything like that. And no, no undesirable effect. This is a very short-term pop-up area, and then it kind of goes away on July 5th, I believe, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then the only thing I would say is a condition that the signed package is what we just discussed in the hearing. And if there's any questions, to contact Andy here at the town.
Thank you.
All right. Those are all good points and good conditions. Anything else? All right. And then just, you'll send in that authorization. I don't see any, any comments. So we have a motion to approve. Did we get a second?
I'll second it.
Andres has seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next application, please.
Facilio Tricosis, 657 Kaylee Drive, Webster, New York, 14580. Request approval for a conditional use under Section 250-13.3 and Section 250-5.6-C1A of the code to allow the operation of a restaurant at 2014 Empire Boulevard. The property is currently or formerly owned by Joseph Bukusi and his own limited business, SBL number 093.02-1-9. This is application number 21Z-0007.
Okay. If you guys can introduce yourselves and give us your name, your address as well, then go ahead with the application.
My name, my name is Jason Kunsert, from the address of 2014 Empire Boulevard.
Okay.
My name is Facilio Tricosis.
Okay. What's your address, sir?
Are you on our, are you on our personal address, or the address we're looking to get into?
Well, an address that you could be contacted if we need to contact you.
Well, my address is 6204 Blossom Ridge Circle, Ontario, New York, 14519.
Okay.
Mine is 657 Kaylee Drive, Webster, New York.
Thank you. Now, go, go ahead and proceed, folks.
Yes. Well, we're looking to open up a restaurant business there at, at the location. More of a family-style restaurant with a menu, a white, white American menu.
Okay. Can you tell us a little bit more about your planned hours of operation, the lighting that you might have, just some more specifics about how you plan to run it? I know, sir, you run the Nutcracker Restaurant down the street.
Yes, sir.
So the same sorts of thing, you know, when are you going to be open, for how long, how many people, how many seats, how many employees? And then we'll spend a little time talking about parking.
We plan to open at 11 to 12 midnight.
Seven days a week?
Most likely, yes. Yeah, for now, yes.
Okay. And how many seats are you going to have within the restaurant?
Same seats they have now. I'm not, I'm not sure how many they have. I mean, I'm assuming like 80, 60, just seats.
Okay. Do we have, do we know maximum? I mean, you, you won't exceed whatever maximum is allowed by fire code.
No.
Yeah, the previous restaurant was 49.
Forty-nine. The previous restaurant had approval for 49. And how many, how many employees do you anticipate having, having?
I'm not sure how many I do need at this point. The principal is a...
Well, the reason, the...
I would think employees to start with.
Yeah. And the reason that we're, we're interested in that is because employees, if they drive, they're going to have to find a spot to park, too. How about, let's talk a little bit about the, you, you hope to have outdoor dining?
Yeah, there's a few tables on that side of the building.
And I'd just like to know, Andy, maybe you could bring back that other one for a minute, the bird's eye view one. Where do you plan to have the outdoor dining? Can you see, can you see what's up on the screen there?
Uh, yes.
It's like looking down.
It would be on the right-hand side of the building, if you're facing it. And there's already patio seating now that, that they use currently.
Okay. So you, you see where his cursor is, that little yellow arrow that's, I just wanted to confirm. You're going to put it in the same spot that, that it had been there before?
Correct.
All right. So what is on the, what is directly across from that, that big building? You can see part of the roof there. That's not a house, right?
It's like a house, but it's a, it's a business.
Okay.
I'm not the business.
Yeah, that's a, that's a better view. Right. So I, the point I'm trying to make is, are there any private residents near where you'd have the outdoor dining?
No.
What's that cursor there, Andy? That you, you have the cursor on what?
That's the house to the rear.
Okay.
This is the actual business here.
Right.
And this is the patio area.
So that is a, that's a private residence in the back there?
I believe so.
It's a driveway in between the private residence. It's a rental property, and we are familiar with the, the people that rent there and live there.
Meaning what? They'd be okay with the outdoor dining?
That is correct, sir.
All right. And you see that big row? That, that's okay. There's like a long row of parked cars there along that rental property. Are, are those cars that go to that rental property? Does anybody know?
I think that's in the back. I think that's a, an auto business towards the back, right-hand side. It's a collision shop, and it's much further. I don't think they would have any access of, you can't see that from, from the patio.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm wondering where the, the people that live in those, in that residence, where they park? I, I don't...
I think there's a driveway towards the left-hand side, or down the road if you're coming down that road.
Okay. Okay. All right. So Andy, do you know whether we had, in terms of outdoor dining in the past, whether we've had any complaints about, from area residents? I'm, I'm not aware of any.
I'm not aware of any related to the outdoor dining.
Not, not related to parking, but, all right. So when you have the outdoor dining, do you have any plans to have music outside?
No music, no.
Okay. Good. Good. All right. Let's, let's talk about the parking situation. You, you're probably aware that over the years, that's, parking's been a problem. And it's, it's kind of been a good problem, because the business was fairly successful. It was pretty crowded all the time. But...
Yes. They can back the house next to us. There is a property next door. I think it's a hair salon. And they, and they're, when they're closed, we would pay them to use their parking as well. That's what they're doing now.
Okay.
It's like they, and also with the, his, the Nutcracker business being 1,000 feet down the street, we, we were, we were thinking about even doing some type of shuttling, things to that nature, with the employees.
All right. Well, I'm, I'm glad you said shuttling there, because it's not, it's not a street made, made for walking too much. So...
That's correct.
I, I get it. There's plenty of parking at Nutcracker. So...
Yes, sir.
All right. Your, have you actually discussed a parking agreement with the owner of the salon?
Yes, we have.
All right. And you're, and you're going to be, are you going to be able to get that in writing?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Because I, my guess is that if you get an approval tonight, it's going to be a condition that you have that kind of an agreement in place in order to be able to operate the restaurant.
Absolutely.
Okay. Good. Good. Go, hmm. Before I ask other members, I suppose I should have, again, reminded the public to call in 340-8771. I don't see any electronic submissions, but you can also submit a comment at penfield.org. Any other comments or questions from the board?
I think the only question I had was, for the outdoor dining, would that be the same hours as your restaurant for the indoor, or would it be limited hours?
I, I believe we would probably shut the outdoors down earlier, earlier, you know, maybe go till like 9:00 to 10:00 o'clock. We'd have to fill it out, but not too many people want to sit outside after 9:00, 10:00 o'clock. And obviously, it'd be limited to just the summer hours.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
All right. Well, thank you. I don't see any comments anywhere, so we will move to consider the application. I'll make a motion pursuant to the environmental review to declare this a type-two action under seeker.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And then as to the application itself, I would make a motion to approve. I, I think the success of the Nutcracker speaks for itself, and I'm confident that there'll be a successful restaurant here, given the, the hard work that we've seen barefoot at the, at the Nutcracker. So I'm, I'm actually glad to see something's going in right away. There is the parking issue, and I, I can't stress enough that we need you to, you know, keep that in mind, and don't let that get out of hand, because I tell you, it wasn't that many years ago that the sheriffs had to be called there, because the folks live, that live on that side road, you know, they, they have a right to be able to get through safely, and also emergency vehicles. So we just can't have that happen.
Absolutely. We're fully aware of that.
Good. Good. All right. So I, I, my motion would be to approve with all of the details that the applicants specified tonight, and no music outside is a pretty important one. And also, no outside dining past, what did you say, 10 o'clock, 9 o'clock?
Yeah, we're thinking 9, 10 o'clock. We're going to fill it out, and obviously, we don't want it to be out there late at night. I mean...
All right. We'll say 10 o'clock, then.
That sounds fine.
And if you find that people are wanting to stay out because of our beautiful weather here in Penfield, just come back to us. Anything else?
I think your parking agreement.
Yeah. And the, heck, getting that parking agreement in writing.
Absolutely.
And would they have to, aren't there noise ordinances or anything with outdoor dining? Can't really be past 10 anyway, I would think.
11 o'clock is when it really starts getting strict.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Well, then, as I said, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
And Andres has seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you do Seeker on that last one? I just want to make sure.
Yes.
Thanks, Pete.
Phil Caldwell, ID Sign Systems, 410 Atlantic Avenue, Rochester, New York, 14609. Request approval for a special permit under Section 250-10.3-A of the code to allow a second building sign whereas a maximum of one building sign is permitted under Section 250-10.13-C of the code at 75 Panorama Creek Drive. The property is currently or formerly owned by Nell G. Nunk International Corporation and is zoned limited industrial. SBL number 138.08-1-56.11. This is application number 21Z-0008.
Okay, thank you, Andy. May the applicants please state their names and addresses and then launch into your application. Okay. Can we try that again? We had a little bit of Star Wars-like vibration.
Sure, sure. It's BJ Bowman. Thermal Fisher Scientific. Nunk Nell G. 75 Panorama Creek Drive.
Yep. I will say it sounded every bit as good as the first time you tried it. Let's go to the other gentleman while you try to figure out what's happening with your mic there.
Hi, I'm Phil Caldwell, representing ID Sign Systems. We were hired to design, construct, and install a sign at the Thermal Fisher location and off of Panorama Trail. It's, there is an existing sign on another area of the building. It's quite a large facility, and the customer, or excuse me, the visitor entrance is on the extreme far end from where the existing sign is, and there's really no indication of that being also Thermal Fisher. This is a fairly small sign that just identifies that visitor entrance. And we would like to get permission to put up a second sign.
Okay, and the total square footage of both signs is, if I understand it correctly, is still less than the square footage that you'd be allowed with one sign on the building? Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, can we, can we pull up a diagram of the building? I just, when Andy's doing that, I just would like you to point out to us, maybe tell Andy, or maybe you know Andy, where the current sign is and where the proposed one would go.
So I believe the current sign is located, this is the whole Thermal Fisher complex here, this whole building. I believe the existing sign is over on this elevation here.
That's correct, yep.
And then the proposed sign is somewhere over here where the main, I guess, entrance to the office area is.
Actually, a little bit closer to that corner, farther away from the, yeah, right about there, yep. There's a little visitor parking lot there and a little small sidewalk area.
Okay, so, thank you for, how much, what's the distance from sign to sign, about?
About 1,000 feet.
Oh, okay, wow, all right. And on the other side of the building, are there any public, if you will, or visitors' entrances on that side?
We'd have to have BJ, I don't believe so.
Yeah, okay, so it wouldn't make any sense to put that sign on that side?
Right, right.
No access there.
Okay. And the sign that you're proposing... Yeah, we're still having trouble understanding you.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
The other two buildings across Panorama Creek are also Thermal Fisher.
Okay, we got that, at least I did.
That whole road is basically Thermal Fisher, and that sign wouldn't be visible from anywhere else, so it's not inflicting anything on the neighbors or anything like that.
Right, that's, that was the point of my questions. Okay, and it's not, is it going to be lit, backlit in any way?
It's internally lit, just the letters.
All right, is it going to be on at night?
Yes.
Okay. All right, it's not going to be visible from Panorama Trail, right?
Right, right, will not be.
Okay, any other questions?
It's just the lettering that's lit up, and the lettering has vinyl over it, so it's more like a halo effect. It's not a bright intense light.
And then just to confirm, there's no freestanding monument signs on that property, are there?
No, sir.
Right. How many employees currently, about?
1200.
Okay. Yeah. That's great, that's great. Okay, any other questions? I do not see any comments either call in or through the website. So we'll proceed with the environmental review, and I'll make a motion to declare this an unlisted action and to issue a negative declaration.
Second.
Second by Matt. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
And on the merits of the application, I will make a motion to approve. First thing to note is that even though it's a second sign, both signs combined are still well under the permitted square footage for a building that size. That's one. Two, I do think, given the nature of this property and the size of this building, that visitors are going to need the sign in order to help get them where they have to go. So I think the sign serves a distinct purpose. I don't see it having any, it's a nice-looking sign, and I don't see it having any adverse effect on, on anyone.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve in a second? Any further comment? All those in favor? Marie? All those in favor?
Aye.
No opposed. Okay, good luck, thank you.
Thank you, board.
Okay.
Ready? Albert Paluzio, Aveline Properties LLC, 360 Jefferson Road, Rochester, New York, 14623. Request approval for a conditional use under Section 250-13.3 and Section 250-5.7-C1K of the code to allow a combination residential business use at 27 Terrell Drive. The property is currently or formerly owned by Aveline Properties LLC and is zoned general business. SBL number 093.11-1-31. This is application number 21Z-0009.
Okay, so if we can have the applicant give us his name and address, and then go ahead and launch into the application.
Albert Paluzio, 360 Jefferson Road, Rochester, New York, 14623.
Okay, tell us what you'd like this board to do for you.
Last year, there was a small business in there, like a dental, made dentures. They left because of COVID, so I'd like to take the first floor and make it into two apartments. Renting commercials is very difficult right now, so I'd like a used variance.
Okay, before we ask questions, once again, I'll ask, I'll remind the public that if they have comments, they can call 340-8771 or submit them via the town's website at Penfield.org. Go ahead, Andres.
Thank you. Can you just talk a little bit about the number of units you're looking, how large they would be, how many occupants would be in each one?
Okay, so the square footage wouldn't change. It'd be two two-bedroom apartments. So in a two-bedroom, generally, there's... The most would be four that I would approve.
Okay. And then in terms of the other buildings in the area, can you describe what the other buildings on that parcel are?
Sure, the other two buildings are apartments. They're four units, two-bedroom in each unit. So there's eight apartments total, it's two buildings.
Sure, and then can you describe a little about where people that are on the property would park if they have vehicles?
Right in front, there's four, let's see, two or six spots.
Okay, and so being a, it was used for a commercial before, there's adequate parking for the number of tenants that you would be proposing?
Yes.
Okay. What other types of changes do you need to make to the building in order to, you know, on the exterior, interior? What kind of changes would occur?
So I'm going to add some drywall and frame out two bedrooms. So if you see, look at the old space, there's a kitchen area in there now. So I'm going to add a kitchen, so there'll be two kitchens. In the drawings, if you scroll, you can see where I've added the framed-out two bedrooms. So there's a vest of you now coming in, the vest of you will come out, that's part of that bedroom.
Okay. In terms of entering and exiting each unit, there's adequate entrance ways to be able to get in, and then also in case of emergencies, ways to get out?
Yes, so the egress for the, would be running with Terrell Drive. As you see, there's a door there, and then the back apartment, there's the back entrance that comes into the building on the side of the parking lot over here. There's also a garage attached here for this bedroom. This goes right into the garage, it goes out.
Thank you. Any kind of additional lighting that we put on the exterior?
No, the building already has exterior lighting. I don't need to add any, there's lights over that both door exits.
Okay.
And a light over the garage.
Okay. Were you provided a copy of a letter we got from, I would guess I would believe the mortgage holder then for the property that you bought it from, in terms of concerns?
Prior to him sending the email, and I do agree with his concern in reference. I'm not looking to change notes to make it residential, I just want to change the use. Because I believe it's just general business right now, correct?
Correct. Okay. And I think we had, was there another, the email that came today was not for this one, was it? That was for the other property, for the signs, right?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
I guess that's all, I think that's all I have for questions for the applicant. I want one question for Pete in terms of just, if this is approved, how does that affect the general business use? And does that just go with, you know, how does that turn back then afterwards if this was to not be residential? I guess that'd be my only question.
As long as it's permitted, it could flip-flop.
Right.
My understanding is staff has already made a determination that this is a, you know, it could be a, it's a conditionally, it's not really a change of use as far as a used variance goes. It's still a conditionally permitted use as similar in nature under that code provision. I don't have that at my fingertips, but that was what staff determined. So it would not be a, you know, would not be a used variance that would run with the land.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a, I'd like a little more clarification on the parking.
Sure.
You got six spots out front, well, on Terrell. And how many are on the side there, four?
Yeah, so what is here? There's one person that works upstairs.
Okay.
She's there, the guy travels, sells hips and knees, so he travels, so he's very rarely there. And then when they do have, they do do clinics out of there. This is all used for the doctors when they come in. They've never parked here because the guy that was here before had three, two to four employees before. So no one from here, from on this side, ever parks over here.
Okay, all right, that helps. Any other, I don't see any comments from the public. I guess I, you said you spoke with the mortgage holder before he sent the emails.
Right, I think he just wanted to put it on notice, and if you, you know, whatever you need that I need to do, I'll, you know, based on that email, if you need him, obviously he has to sign off for me to do it. So that's between me and him, the mortgage, I can't break the mortgage with him. So I'm not, obviously I'm going to have that signed off by him.
Would that be a condition of approval?
Yeah, you're willing to accept that as a condition of approval, that you resolve that with him, as you just said you would?
Yeah, I have to, because it's part of the mortgage, so I have no problem doing that.
Okay, good.
Those are all the questions I have.
Okay, and again, I see no comments from the public, so let's move to Seeker.
I guess, well, I'm sorry, I guess I was just thinking that we're going to have to start thinking about space really differently because of COVID and how that's going to change everything.
Yeah, well, you was talking earlier about marketing and how difficult it's been for some purposes.
Exactly.
It's going to really take some creativity on everybody's part. It's a good point. Okay.
I'm going to move that this is a Type II action, not subject to further review under Seeker.
I will second that. Any further comment? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And the merits?
And the merits. So in terms of the space, let me just pull my sheet back up here. You know, he spoke to the means of egress and ingress. There's no issues there that will be provided with any additions or things that are changed in there. He has adequate parking, as demonstrated. In terms of impact, currently, the surrounding area has residential in it as well, and there is still commercial above this space, so I think it is compatible with the area as well. No types of signs will be changing. And basically for the entrances, there already was sight, or there already was sight distance already coming in and out, so that was already all set on the exterior. Nothing's really changing at all, no additional exterior lighting either. And so with that, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Second.
And also add, I guess also add the conditions that we spoke of with the mortgage holder.
Great, okay, we have a motion to approve with those conditions based upon the facts recited. And we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay, good luck.
Thank you.
And the next application, and I think the last application.
Actually, should we have Christine just note that Matt had to repeat himself in the minutes?
Yes, we should. Thank you.
Daniel Brock, Labella Associates, 300 State Street, Suite 201, Rochester, New York, 14614. On behalf of Rochester Institute of Technology, request an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a taller fence than permitted under Section 250-7.1-D of the code, and approval for a special permit under Section 250-10.3-A of the code to allow larger no trespassing signs than permitted under Section 250-10.22 of the code at 100 Old Quarry Lane. The property is currently or formerly owned by Rochester Institute of Technology and is zoned R-1-20. SBL number 123.15-1-1. This is application number 21Z-0010.
Okay, I see three faces there, so if we could have the applicant, whoever's going to speak or planning on speaking, give us name and address, and then go right ahead into the application.
Sounds good. My name is Dan Brock, civil engineer with Labella Associates and project manager for the proposed applications for the Tate Preserve. With me are, and we are located at 300 State Street, Suite 201 in Rochester. With me tonight is Dave Brought from RIT, Director of the Tate Preserve, and Marilyn Schler, Manager of Real Estate and Commercial Leasing for RIT. Schler, Manager of Real Estate and Commercial Leasing for RIT. We have two applications in front of the board tonight, one for a area variance for a eight-foot-high fence where six foot is permitted. That proposal, or that application, what we're trying to do is, RIT would like to build a garden for educational purposes, it's approximately 60 by 120, and with the population of wildlife on the property and in the area, they'd like to put an eight-foot-high fence. I believe the board has seen pictures of the fence, the bulk of the fence will be maintained at six foot, it's going to have six-foot-high posts with agricultural fence in between. The additional two foot that we're requesting is mainly to hold up three cables, which would equate to eight feet, to keep out the deer. I don't know, I can move on to the next application, or if you want to talk about this one, it's up to you.
Go ahead and finish.
Sure, okay. So the second part of our application, or our second application, is to allow for larger-than-allowed no trespassing signs. With the new use of the property and the new ownership, RIT is proposing to use the signs you see in front of you, they are larger than I believe the 12-inch by 10-inch, I believe, that the town allows. The purpose of this is, we're like, we'd like to educate the adjoining parcels and the people that could possibly venture onto the property about the new ownership and the new use of the site. We're not looking to put this sign at every 200 feet along the property, what we're proposing is to put it in four locations. Now, these four locations were handpicked, because these are the four locations where RIT has seen the most entrance of trespassers. You've got one at Old Penfield Road, one along Ellison Park, one just along Thomas Cove Road, and one just downhill from Panorama Trail. These are the only locations we're proposing these signs. And again, the sign is more to educate the, any wanderers that happen to go onto the property about the new ownership and the new use of the land. And I believe that is the extent of our application, and we'd be more than happy to take questions from the board.
Okay, thanks. Before we start with questions, again, let me remind the public, you can call in with comments or questions at 340-8771. You can also send them in electronically at penfield.org. I do note, I don't know if you folks were able to see it, but we did get an email the last couple of days, I think, from a person. Have you guys seen that?
I have not, I'm calling up the agenda now to see, is it in the agenda?
No.
No, I have not.
It's not all day long, let me read it to you quickly, it has to do with the signs, not the fence. Scott Mackay, if I'm pronouncing his name correctly, gives us a dress, and then he says, he's submitting this, and he has two points he makes, the posted sign in question is referred to in the description as the typical, quote, "no trespassing sign" that RIT uses. Can they provide examples of where this sign is used on other properties? Go ahead, somebody nodded, if...
Go ahead, Dave. So we have the standard sort of one foot by one foot no trespassing signs along Old Penfield Road, would probably be the location that's most visible to the public, I believe those are the signs that are being referenced here.
Yeah, and how many of those do you have on other properties? Do you know, a ballpark figure?
Of the smaller, no?
Well, either ones, actually, if you, so you've only used the smaller ones then in other properties?
This property is unique, it's different than anything else that RIT has, so this is a new nation for us. The smaller posted signs, you know, are fairly common, you're familiar with those.
Yeah.
The proposed sign is much larger, that's what we're, and specifically, it's 48-inch by 28 inches, it's freestanding, not illuminated sign, they will not be in plain view from the road or from people's houses, this is really, if someone does venture onto the property, then we're trying to inform them with these signs.
Yeah, and I, maybe I did a poor job of relating what I thought the question was, and I thought he said that, have you used the signs you're proposing here, have you used them before, and I think your answer is no, based upon what you said. This is a...
Yeah, I'm sorry if I didn't understand.
No, that's, okay, so it's the first time, and then the second question is, why can't they install regular-sized posted sign in the same strategic locations? What do you have to show that the larger signs would be more effective?
Well, our thought here is that the immediate visual impact will be something that can't be ignored, you sort of get a fatigue from seeing posted signs, the standard one foot by one foot posted sign, and people start to ignore them. Also, this property has been posted, you know, by previous owners for a while, and I think people have started to ignore them, because the trespassing wasn't strictly enforced. So with these larger signs, we're trying to create visual impact and convey a lot of information as the new use of the property, in a way that, you know, is different and won't be ignored the way that smaller posted signs can be. So yeah, we're hoping that this has a better efficacy, in terms of communicating that this is private property, and if there's a new use case for the property as well.
Okay, and...
Like, Chairman, I just want to add that the signs we're proposing, we're not proposing to put them right on the property line, we're proposing to put them approximately 50 feet off the property line, so really, the people that are going to see these signs are the individuals that are already on the property, and it's just act as a deterrent to let them know that they've gone a little too far.
Yeah, actually, I was going to ask that, because, can we pull up the site again? I would imagine, to read that, you got to get pretty close, I know I would have to get pretty close to it.
Me too.
So, I was going to ask that, so 50 foot off the line, somebody's already on, has an idea of, maybe innocently, just walking through, and then sees a sign, says, oh, wait, RIT property, I need to, I need to leave or seek permission. Okay. Do we have any other questions about this? I, I will, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I said, the only thing I had about, I'm, you know, just somewhat familiar with posted signs, is I think normally you have to have your property address listed on there, and the landowner, which I think you have is RIT, but normally you would list, you know, your property address on a posted sign, so that way someone knows they've wandered onto a new property, as opposed to just your RIT address. In general, I think that's the way I understand it.
So that's a requirement, we could modify the content of the sign, the reason that we have that address and that number is because those are addresses where someone, you know, will always answer the phone, and where someone can always be reached, so...
Yeah.
If it's preferred to have the 100 Old Quarry Lane, we can do that, but the thinking here was to give someone an address and a phone number where they can always get in touch with someone from RIT.
Sure. No, I think I was just more relating to a general posted sign for the DEC, because that's usually where you see them, is, you know, because this relates to hunting, fishing, tramping, and so that tends to say, this is the property you've wandered onto, this is the landowner, this is where you turn around.
And we could absolutely revise the sign to state that the property address being 100 Quarry Lane, but still have RIT's contact information at the bottom of the sign.
Okay. Andy, any requirement in our code about what can go on and what can't go on, or what must go on?
Nothing, I mean, there's, obviously, they have to comply with, you know, any DEC requirements for posting of the property, but we don't have anything above and beyond those requirements.
All right, any other questions about the application here?
I guess for me, I mean, my big thing is, I'm not sure this larger sign makes much of a difference, you know, where smaller signs are adequate everywhere else in the, you know, outdoors. I guess, so that's more than my thing, is, are we going to set something where now everyone's going to want to start to get larger signs to post other, you know, so now you're going to see, as you travel along, wherever, you're going to see larger signs across sites, I know, like, even when the property was purchased, they put up some fairly large signs, and those had to be taken down, but they were kind of an eyesore, as you look, you know, where they put them across. And these are strictly not visible from the roadway, correct?
Correct.
So I guess, you know, there's just, some of those, I'm just worried about...
I think this is a unique property, too, that probably we can point to as far as precedent.
Yeah.
And if it's not seen from the roadway, I think that that might alleviate some concerns.
Yeah.
I just feel like there's a lot of white space on the sign, and could it just be smaller?
Okay, so actually, this image that we're seeing here has a little bit of extra space on the actual final printed sign, that the space at the top will be eliminated, the edge of the sign will start, the top edge will start at the red, and then below, where we have the stamps, received, those stamps there, we'll cut off that edge as well, we're going to use as much of the space of the sign for content, and not have those edges on the top and bottom, you're correct.
Okay.
Okay.
I understand you have an application pending before the planning board?
That's correct.
And that's, what, three weeks out or something?
That's on April 8th for site plan approval.
All right, can you describe what you're asking for there, and the reason, let me tell you, the reason I'm asking, is to me, in my mind, your request for larger signs may be somewhat dependent on what you're asking for there and what would get approved, so at this moment, I, and I'm speaking for myself, would lean toward tabling this to see what, frankly, what the planning board thinks of this. This is our jurisdiction to do this, but because they have a broader range of issues to consider, they may want to chime in on both of these applications in some manner. So I'd welcome the opportunity for them to do that, but go ahead and give us a brief description of what you're asking for there.
As far as the planning board, oh, go ahead, Dave, you want to talk?
Yeah, so our planning board application is an amendment to a conditional use permit that we have to expand the uses that we can, the use of the site. Currently, we are already permitted, we have a conditional use permit, to use the site for educational purposes.
Right.
These signs are really related to protecting the research and the educational activities of the property, so, sort of regardless of the outcome of our planning application, we will be using the site for educational purposes, which we are already permitted to do. So, you know, trespassing, one of the reasons we are trying to inform people that this is private property and trespassing is not allowed, is to preserve and protect the integrity of any research products that are going on, also preserve and protect the quality of the environment. So those are things, those are things that we're going to be doing, that we are doing and will continue to do. The planning board application is more related to some site work in terms of drainage, parking, and uses of the lodge.
Okay, and that's honestly the last thing that you said, is what I would anyway be most interested in learning about, because I've heard everything you've said about the need for the fence, and the need for the signs, because it's educational purpose, and that's great, and I sort of just want to make sure we're all on the same page about what the use of this beautiful property is going to be three, four, five years from now. I hear you, loud and clear, educational purpose, I get that, so in any event, that's what I'm thinking at this point, but I have one vote.
Well, could we go ahead?
Education will always be the focus of the property.
Okay.
So as part of the original conditional use permit, it was always based on the educational purpose, with the, the conditional use permit allowed them to use the educational aspects of the property in a residential, it also allowed for meetings, conferences, seminars, sorry, and similar uses and uses of the land for research and other academic programs directly related to RIT. Also, as part of the conditional use permit, one of the contingencies was that when RIT had advanced their intentions for the property, or their goals for the property, that they would reappear in front of the board to share that information. Much of what we're proposing from the planning board in April is a slight modification of the conditional use permit, meaning to update them on RIT's use, intentional use for the property. The bulk of the use is not changing. They have had some drainage concerns and erosion concerns, obviously with this deepness going down that road, they'll be putting in a drain system there. They are proposing to put in some parking with some grass pavers, a new fire protection pump, and some changes on the interior. They also want to address, bring the site up to fire code by widening the access lane, and also to provide ADA accessibility down by the lodge. The garden itself, that is something that RIT will, would like to build no matter what. It's something that's directly pertaining to the educational use. The signs are directly related to RIT's intention of educating and informing the, anybody that happens to wander on the site about the new owners and the new use.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Any other comments or questions on this?
I was just going to ask if the planning board application had anything to do with, you know, private events or weddings and parties and things like that, if that was going to extend the use to something different.
The, there is no intention for this, for the site to be used for a public venue. There is a question of, so in RIT, I'll say that right out, there is no intention for this to become a public venue. There has been discussion and a request that, though our conditional use permit, or their conditional use permit allows meetings, conferences, seminars, and similar uses, there has been a request and a thought that there could be a wedding held there, directly related to an RIT alumni. And Marilyn, Dave, you can both correct me if I'm misspeaking, but the intention is that this site will always remain under RIT's jurisdiction, and will not be held for public events.
Okay. So it sounds like it might be drifting a little bit away from educational use, but for the most part, educational.
Yes, 90, 95, 96, or higher percent of this site will always be used for educational purposes. There is a small aspect of just, again, they don't have, they're not planning on having weddings every other day, every other weekend, or every week. It's something that they just want to be able to propose to the board as an optional use, if a Board of Trustees wants to have a wedding there, or, you know, a baby shower or something. It'd be more of a use type like that, but that would be a very small and minimal aspect of the overall use of the property.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
All right, and once again, I'll check, I don't see any comments via phone or online. All right, well, as I said earlier, I'm going to make a motion to table and see what the planning board thinks, I don't, you know, we'll see, I don't, I don't see any huge issue with them, but that's, they can speak for themselves as well, I just wanted them to get a chance to hear what the proposal is, and then comment on these. Any further comments on that? All right, so we're going to hold off on the seeker, but we'll make a, I've made a motion to table, Andres is second, all those in favor? Aye. All right, you'll have your opportunity with planning board, you may want to ask them, Andy probably will too, but a lot, when we have applications pending on both boards, one board may issue a recommendation to the other board, it's not binding, of course, but, you know, an advisory recommendation, so they may say, given the proposed site plan and change in conditional use, we think the requests for the variances are appropriate, and we take that under advisement.
And then we'd appear for the next zoning board meeting after, if we're granted that letter and a recommendation from the planning board, then we reappear in front of the zoning board, correct?
Yeah, first thing, you'll, we'll take this up in our work session, right when we start at 6:30.
Okay.
And that's good for you, because we have like 12 applications. You're welcome to stick around and watch all of them to the end.
Well, it depends if I'm at the office or at home, so we'll see what happens. No, it's understandable, I appreciate it, thank you.
All right, so I, have a good night, I think that was the last application, and we will stand adjourned until next month, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.